Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
For Crete Moni School Board 201U special meeting today is Tuesday, May the sixth, twenty twenty five, eighteen thirty is the time or six thirty P. M. Mr. Secretary, can I have roll call, please?
All right, roll call, Mr. Albrecht, here. Mr. Gallegos, is it here? Mr. Swalish?
Here.
Ms. Zain Stumberus?
Here.
Ms. Wolfok?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Here.
President Brown?
Here. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Board Secretary, Mr. Alex Gallegos, followed by a mission statement read by Dr. Hall.
I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement is to engage and empower our students to positively impact their community and future.
Thank you both. Then moves us to public comments. We have three, four, actually. And the first one on the topic of Mr. Maine, Andrea Chambers?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Chambers. I wear many hats in this district. I'm a parent of students who attend CSK. I'm an active community member, an alumni, and an employee. However, tonight, I'm speaking to you as a CSK staff member and a CMBA Union Representative for Coretta Scott King Magnet School. I'm here to represent the many voices that we feel have not been heard. We're aware that many staff, current parents, and former parents have reached out sharing their concerns. We want to thank those of you in attendance for taking your time to stand with, speaking with us about the injustice that's occurring to Mr. Brian Maine. We additionally appreciate the board providing us this opportunity to speak up. And representing the staff tonight, we are devastated and we're confused. We're asking why. Others are speaking tonight to reference data and speak to emotions, but we are overwhelmingly asking that you do what is right by this individual and our students. You have the data regarding the effectiveness of our school. The last time we as a staff stood before you in this room, you were commending us for our U.S., World, and News Report recognition. Mr. Maine is the reason for our school's continued success. We as a staff must speak out against any placement that puts him in a position other than the role of principal. We understand that the high school is the focus in our district. It's sports, the new sports complex, and the challenges that also occur there. But the seeds of success begin in an elementary level, and Mr. Maine, he waters these seeds. He allows teachers to advocate and use professionalism to make decisions that are best for our students. He molds the students that will one day be at that very high school. Any educator will tell you that the best way to be proactive is to start young. Research supports early intervention academically, socially, and emotionally. Is it not the best course of action to support our students when they're young? Brian Maine leads by example to foster caring, inquisitive individuals who take action to make a difference in our world, both locally in our community and our world at large. A leader of this caliber does not deserve any title in this district less than principal. This pending decision of relocation devalues the skills and experience he brings and his leadership capabilities as the dean position is not an academic role. We as a staff see this as a drastic decision, and we implore you to seek an alternative solution. Please keep an, please keep an open mind in listening to the other speakers that are here with me today, and we ask you to carefully reconsider your decision for the sake of all that would be affected by this move. I have some handouts to prepare for you of the letters from our many staff members.
Thank you. Good job. Because, because the previous speakers spoke for so many, and we have three public comments here. Typically, we give three minutes per person to speak and five for various reasons. So if you can't hold no longer, I'll give you five minutes if you need that, no longer. If that's okay with the board? For the next three speakers, no longer than five minutes. That's our policy, and we need to adhere to our policy. So the next person we have is in support of Mr. Maine, and that's Carrie Morgan.
I'll probably only use two minutes, so if Mr. Birmingham wants to use my three, this is. I'm cool with that, okay?
You've got a phone going off.
Um, good evening. My name is Carrie Morgan, and I am the parent of two CSK alumni as well as an involved family member. I'm sorry, community member. I emailed each of you regarding my concerns surrounding Mr. Maine's reassignment.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, if you don't mind, just, there's a, hold on. You can carry on. I apologize.
All right. Good evening. My name is Carrie Morgan, and I am the parent of two CSK alumni as well as an involved community member. I emailed each of you regarding my, my concerns surrounding Mr. Maine's reassignment and the way I feel it could potentially affect next year's Ivy reauthorization process. I'm trusting you've read those emails and have considered the information presented within them. For the next couple of minutes, I'd like to focus on the Five Essentials survey and the results within our district. I'm not exaggerating when I say CSK's results blow all the other district schools out of the water. I don't want anyone to feel that I'm putting the other schools down. I am not. I work closely with four of the schools in our district as part of my job, and I feel all of them have amazing students and dedicated teachers. What I want to focus on is the fact that CSK has obviously found the golden combination, the perfect formula to succeed in every single area that the Five Essentials survey covers. A former 201U employee, if somebody can hold that up, a former 201U employee put together this color-coded chart for me to share with you tonight, highlighting specifically the indicators of the Five Essentials survey results that relate closely to the role of principal, such as teacher principal trust, instructional leadership, and program coherence. CSK is the gold bar, and the other four district elementary schools are also depicted. It is unmistakably obvious that CSK has far surpassed them all. CSK has the right combination of effective leadership, dedicated teachers, involved families, and hardworking students, and Mr. Maine is a huge component of this success. I implore you to allow CSK to continue to soar under Mr. Maine's principalship. Don't dismantle something good in the hopes one individual can bring a bit of CSK magic to another setting. CSK's success has been a collaborative effort, and all parts are needed in order for it to continue to shine. Thank you.
Thank you much. But it is regarding this. Regarding this, okay. Thank you. Okay, next public comment is in regards to Mr. Maine as well from Brandon Birmingham.
Good evening to all of you, and thank you for your service, in particular, Mr. Albrecht. You good and faithful servant. Job well done. Way to finish strong. My name is Brandon Birmingham, and I am the art and the PE teacher of our Coretta Scott King Magnet School. I serve both roles. Twenty-five years in education, and I have been in the district for fifteen years, fourteen, oh, sixteen years. Fourteen of those sixteen years have been at CSK. I consider CSK to be my home, but I am a loyal district employee. I, I came from a, a district as an administrator and seeking that creativity opportunity, I found a home here in the U. A little less than a week ago, we got that news from Mr. Maine that the previous speakers were speaking of, and it definitely left us all confused. And, well, five minutes right now, and I thank you for giving me that extra time, if, if I can still have that. While we were extremely confused, there are a lot of emotions. We were sad, we were a little angry. But most, most, more than anything, we were disappointed because most of us just wanted one minute of, of your time. And most of us got zero minutes of anybody's time within the district. In education, we're told, of course, the OTL department will back us up, that we should be making data-driven decisions, and we should make sense. We don't want to go to a doctor and then not, and then not expect them to make good, sound decisions in our health. We do that in our district. We do that in our classrooms. We do that when students walk in. We see them hungry. We see that they need a hug. We, we do, we feed them, we hug them, we make sure they're taken care of. Finance department makes some good, sound decisions based upon data-driven decisions, the data that's available. OTL makes some good, sound, data-driven decisions. Human Resources makes some good data decisions, decisions through those checking references, looking at resumes and thus forth. Now, there's two different pieces of information here that are, drives our data here at CSK. It often gets overlooked, almost always, if not always. What we have is, Mrs. Wojcik, thanks so much for being my assistant. This is, this is last year's IAR scores. As a matter of fact, and our Illinois Science assessments. Now, some of you on this board have been asking for a long time, like, what's happened to CSK students over the years, right? What's the longitudinal data, and how have we been outperforming or performing or underperforming other students within the district? I, I'm not too sure if I've ever heard the results to that, but this is last year. We've outscored every other, all other four of the elementary schools last year. And by some metrics, quite substantially. This was the year before. We once again have outscored every other elementary school within this district, and as you can see, sometimes quite substantially. Let's go one year back. This is yet again, this is us against the rest of the district. Now, you might say, why do you say that? That sounds so confrontational. We've never been presented, we've never been represented the way that we feel like we ever should have been. We almost become a wallflower. This is us. We've outperformed substantially more than every other school in the district. Can we go the next year? Now, I gotta give it to the Moni because they edged us out on the Illinois Science assessment, and boy, we took that personally. Okay? They, but in the other two tests, we outscored the other schools in the district, and might I say, in most instances, substantially. In two thousand nineteen for ELA and, and the math, CSK has outperformed the rest of the district. Now, I can't pretend that everything is peaches and cream, right? Because Moni edged us out in two thousand eighteen. So I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to hide the data, but kudos to them. They did a great job. If we go to the year prior, I was able to get a, just the overall meets and exceeds, and Moni once again pulling, pulling ahead of us. Yum, kudos, recognition to Moni. When it goes to the year prior, which is two thousand sixteen, we had once again outperformed each of the other four elementary schools in the district, and by some of those other schools quite substantially. So this next one right here is a pie chart that represents how many times we've outperformed the rest of the district. And please pay attention, out of eighteen tests that I had on my data, fourteen of them, we've outperformed them. Four of them, they've outperformed us, and that would be Moni. Okay? So needless to say, something's going right, and this data is taken from two thousand sixteen to two thousand fourteen. Now, the other set of data that we have is, of course, from the, from the Five Essentials survey. The Five Essentials survey measures five different areas, and in those areas, they measure effective leaders, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, ambitious instruction, and involved families. Now, I have this data that I've collected since two thousand fifteen when Mr. Maine came in. And by the way, all those years were when Mr. Maine was with us. Now, this is the data that's gathered, gathered over the course of a number of years, and there are a hundred and eighty data points with the other schools and thirty data points with us, in five different categories. What I want you to do is I want you to, let me just say this. All these signs that are being held up here, these dark green ones, those are a very strong designation. That's a score of a five. You might say, how do you get a score of a five? Well, representation by certain groups of people. The one, staff. Two, our students represent us. And three, the parents represent us as well. So the three different communities, three different parts to these scores are here. These dark ones right here are a very strong designation. This one, that's a little light, it's a strong designation. Let me just sum this up to make it very clear, so I don't go through every single little piece of data. How many of the other schools last year had gotten a very strong designation? Because I'm certain that everybody knows this, zero. Over the last six years, how many times did any other school in this district get a very strong designation? That's a big zero. We had gotten four very strong designations in one year. If you look here, out of our thirty data points from the last six years, ten of our thirty data points were very strong. That's a third. That's a third of our, our numbers that have been gathered over six years. We have fifty-seven percent that still got designated as a strong label, and we got ten percent, which was only three times, three different categories, in six years that we've got neutral. How many weak? Zero. How many very weak? Zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Birmingham. I'll give you one more minute.
Thank you. Can you please clip it? This is the rest of the district minus the ELC and minus the MEC. There are no strong designations here. Zero percent. For strong designations, they've gotten sixteen percent. For neutral, they have gotten fifty-two percent designations over the course of the last six years. And the lowest score of a two or a one, they've gotten thirty-two percent, which is how many we've gotten as being a very strong- we've gotten as being a very strong designation school. Now, where does this leave us? It leaves us wondering what in the world is happening. We're scratching our head and trying to figure this out. We come to school every single day to work as a part of a team. The team here that's present as well as Mr. Maine and Mrs. Roberts, we come together every day to make it happen. I know that the other schools are also working hard. It's nothing against them, but when Ms. Morgan had mentioned that there is a, uh, secret combination, it really hit home with me. We can't deny the fact that a leader will help support what's going on. If we diminish the need for a strong leader in our building like Mr. Maine who fits very nicely to say that, well, any administrator can take over, well, well, then I guess we can be teacher leader schools and have no administrators. It makes sense that Mr. Maine has been a very, very partner. He'll never take credit for it, not once. He'll always push credit upon us. He'll never take credit for the success. Most good leaders will. What is my hope in the last twenty seconds? My hope is that we pause today. My hope is that we pause so that we can make the best decision. It's my hope that we can talk, have an honest conversation with more staff members at CSK. I hope that we can pause tonight's decision so that we can have an honest conversation about where we'd like to go. My fear was that we would lose Mr. Maine down the road. I figured he would have lost him to district office because of the successes that he's been able to show the district, but we're not. We're losing him to a dean position. Now, here's the thing that I can't understand.
You're gonna have to rest it, I'm sorry.
I have no idea where this came from. I am going to tell you something though. Mr. Maine isn't perfect. He's not a perfect individual and neither am I and neither are students and neither you and neither you and neither you. But he's perfect for CSK and his service towards CSK can't be, can't be overlooked based upon the data. And my last sentence is, if we decide that this is the route to take, I think there's a lot of questions and a lot of answers that need to be given to the communities. The communities that pay rent and pay, um, and, and pay a mortgage, who, who depend on these schools and that's our greatest advertisement, by the way. Five Essentials and the IAR, IAR. That's our greatest advertisement and I'm hoping that we can do what's right best for the district, what's best for the community.
Thank you, sir.
I hope that I get it, but honestly, who needs it? The kids need it. The kids need it. Oh!
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, uh, some might say, send them to the other elementary schools.
I, I have never brought the hammer out. And I don't want to do it.
Fifteen, fifteen words.
All news will be on me doing this. That's not gonna happen.
Just fifteen words. Teach, teach a man, give a man a fish, you feed him for a day, right? That's why I propose now sending Mr. Maine to as a principal to another. Teach a man two fish, you feed him for life. Come visit us, sends teachers to us and administrators to see what's going on that's good at CSK that's been happening since he's been here.
Thank you. Thank you for the passion. All right. Our next public comment is from Karema Boyd and is regarding to the principal of CSK. Okay. But may not be in a, be in your way, but I ask you to be respectful and don't divulge any.
Make sure that the mic's on. I think it's off.
Any, uh, private information? I recommend nature, don't divulge it. Do not share any private information. Okay?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent and I'll try to read this within, within the five minutes. My comments are related to ongoing concerns and questions regarding leadership and student support at CSK. To the members of our school board, assistant superintendents and superintendent, my name is Karema Boyd and I am the parent of Zion Boyd, a third grader, a third grade student at Coretta Scott Magnet School. I am here to share my ongoing concerns about leadership, recent changes, and the negative impact that inst, that instability, lack of transparency and accountability, and insufficient, um, follow-through are having on my child's educational experience and my confidence in you all as our elected leaders. While Mr. Maine may be regarded by some as a dedicated leader and champion for creating a dynamic learning environment, his recent reassignment, uh, reassignment or demotion raises critical questions. What are we missing? If something is lacking, it may be contributing to Zion's less than acceptable experience in the second and third grade as well as her classmates, whose parents are here tonight to express the same and similar concerns. My first ongoing concern is with leadership. This was fueled even more when I saw a post on social media celebrating and highlighting the same principal who has been allegedly reassigned by the board against his will as a distinguished leader during Principal Appreciation Week. He has served as principal at CSK for ten years. Now, the board has determined that he is no longer considered a valuable candidate to lead at the elementary level. Yet he is being reassigned to the high school where my other child attends, um, as well as another will be attending, uh, in the fall, along with more than four thousand other students. What message are we sending to parents? Because frankly, it is not clear. I am compelled to believe that this situation that resulted in Mr. Maine's reassignment has affected Zion's learning experience and the overall learning environment at CSK over the past two years. I want to clarify that my comments are not intended as critique or criticism. However, I believe it is crucial to point out specific examples to ensure transparency, accountability, and positive changes that warrant favorable outcomes for all CSK students moving forward. My second concern is that our children have faced significant disruptions to their instruction over the past two years, including, number one, teachers attempting to manage ongoing disruptions during valuable instructional time, often unsuccessfully. Students being tasked with navigating these constant disruptions without adequate support. Concerns raised about Zion's first-year third-grade teacher who has struggled with classroom management and whose instructional quality is below expectations and likely due to limited support. Number four, last year, under Zion's second-grade teacher, similar concerns were raised about her classroom management and instructional effectiveness as a first-year teacher. Again, I emphasize that these are not criticisms but reflections of ongoing challenges that I worry will persist into the next school year and beyond if they are not prioritized and addressed. My third and primary concern is what actions will follow. I respectfully ask the board, the assistant superintendents, and the superintendent, number one, do you have a clear, do you have a clear transparent process in place for selecting our next school leader? Number two, how do you ensure that this process emphasizes accountability, strong oversight, and measurable effective outcomes for all CSK students? Number three, beyond a resume, what qualify, what qualities will be prioritized such as genuine interest and proven track record with the IB curriculum? Number four, how will you provide reassurance that our children's education at CSK will improve under new leadership? Number five, will our voices be included in decision-making? Number six, what plans are in place to manage behavioral issues effectively? Number seven, how will support measures like IEPs and 504 plans be consistently and effectively implemented moving forward? So that we are clear about my priorities and commitment as a parent, I have taken the following steps to support my child. Number one, I have met with her teachers to address my concerns. I've communicated with Zion constantly and increased home support base on her teachers' recommendations. Number three, I've connected with other parents to identify trends and discuss strategies for supporting our children's education. Four, I volunteered in her classroom. Five, escalated my unresolved concerns to Mr. Maine. Number six, followed up with Zion's teacher. Number seven, followed up with other leaders at CSK. Number eight, recently I took advantage of district providing tutoring sessions. All of this, and I find my child in the same unfortunate situation. As I plan to escalate my concerns further by requesting a meeting with district leadership, I received notice that Mr. Maine would be reassigned. Following that notice, I was asked to write a letter to the board supporting Mr. Maine. Instead.
If a one-minute warning.
Okay. Instead, I have chosen to bring my unresolved concerns directly to the board meeting in hope of solutions and reassurance that there will be follow-through. I understand I may not receive an immediate response tonight, however, I truly hope that we can work together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, our last public comment is to thank you because to our dynamic board member Nelson Albrecht and welcome to Ms. Elizabeth Vegas, that from Christine. No, we're not, we're not, we're not rushing you out of here.
Good evening. Hello. Quite a large crowd tonight. Um, I just wanted to take a moment and, uh, say thank you to Mr. Albrecht for everything he's done for this district. If you guys are unaware, this is an unpaid position. Um, the perks are long hours and lots of, lots of discussions, um, that you're not always on the same page with people. We really appreciate everything that you have done for us and I hope that you move on to better things and are still an active community member. And I would also like to welcome, um, oh, I practiced the name about twenty minutes ago, Ms., Ms. Vegas to his seat. Um, and thank you, Ms. Wolfel, for continuing on and, uh, staying with us as the board. That is it. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you so much. And just to, in this public comment, usually we do not comment on comments, but I thought it was necessary to do so regarding a matter very quick. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to extend our sincere, sincere appreciation to all who have taken the time to share their thoughts, concerns, and perspectives regarding recent administrative, administrative matters. We have received and reviewed numerous communications and understand the depth of emotions and commitments expressed by the members of our community. Please know that we are listening. We value the respect, the voices of our families, staff, and community members. Your input plays an essential role in our deliberation and decision-making process. As a board, we are committed to voting in a manner that is fair, equitable, and grounded in what is best for the long-term success and stability of the entire district. Our focus remains on fostering an environment that supports academic excellence, strong leadership, and the well-being of all students and staff across our schools. Thank you again for your continued support and engagement with our District 201U. With that, we do have a motion, but we do have a reason to go into closed session. As soon as I find a reason. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employee, specific individual?
So moved.
Second by Nelson. Second by Bill. Any questions or comments? If not, we are in closed session. We're gonna vote.
Roll call.
I'm really trying to rush this, right? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mr. Gallegos is an aye. Mr. Sowalish?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbris?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfel?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
President Brown?
Aye. We're now in closed session. We should be in closed session. It's gonna be relatively quick, maybe about fifteen minutes, no longer. We should be in closed session. It's gonna be relatively quick, maybe about fifteen minutes, no longer.
Wait, he had more pictures with the kid than with me.
Ah.
Been around longer.
You know, when I came on the board, Mary Bragg, former CMEA president, and she was a school board member herself, she, her advice to me and Cheryl Rup at the time was always vote your conscience and you'll never go wrong. And I can say that I've done that. And just a couple other things, you know, it's kind of intimidating. We've been through a lot as this board. One of the things that, you know, I think is important that is that as a board we stay nonpartisan. You know, back four years ago, the Will County Republicans offered to give me a, you know, recommendation or, and I turned it down just because I didn't think that was right. We worked well together when we leave our outside agendas outside this room. And so I hope this board continues that. And just lastly, you know, I talk to my kids all the time about, you know, whatever you're doing in life, try to leave the place better than you found it. And I can walk away tonight thinking saying that I did.
Absolutely.
So thank everyone for your support, giving me the opportunity.
His doesn't work. I think the battery's out.
The power button.
It's okay. It can run. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Hold on to the power button for like three seconds.
The one right here? There's two buttons here.
Yeah, it's the left one.
It has mute.
That one's not working.
It's this one that's not. That's his. This is mine.
Does this?
The screen went out.
It's working.
Most likely.
No, the screen went out. The screen went out on that for some reason. Weird.
Are you ready for mute, John? Item six, recognition.
Yes, thank you public for being patient. So patient without, yeah, so number three, following our agenda, number six, recognition of outgoing board member by Dr. Coglinese.
Well, it is definitely with bittersweet comments tonight that we say farewell to Mr. Nelson Albrecht. You have served this board extremely well. You started here in 2017, is that correct?
Correct.
He was vice president in 2017 to 2019. He was a school board president from 2019 to 2023. And you brought us through COVID, as I recall.
Yes, I remember.
And I'm sure as you're sitting here tonight, you're thinking about all the things that this board has accomplished when you were, when you were sitting on this board. And I've got just a few of them here. We improved the HVAC to add air conditioning to all elementary buildings. We raised the dome and the sixth grade center, relocated buildings and grounds, built out Bridges Wing at the high school, prepared MEC building for sale, relocated district offices, approved construction of new athletic fields for the high school, approved addition to new classrooms at the middle school, implemented best-in-class for our safety and security that we have, restructured the school bonds such as the taxpayers receive a $2 million reduction in 2026, district operating at a cumulative budget surplus for the last eight years. And of course, you survived COVID. So anyway, those are just some of the highlights that have been accomplished here with you at, on the table. And there's many, many more. But I think for me personally, as I got a chance to work with you as, as you were the board president, it was wonderful meeting with you at coffee every Friday to really talk about business, getting to know a little bit about your families, and just really getting to know you as a person. And I just have high respect for you as an individual. You're high integrity, and you will certainly be missed here on the board.
Oh, thank you so much.
We have just, oh, do you want to add something?
Yeah, any board members.
Any board members want to add?
Yeah.
Do you have your mic?
I think we've been volunteering, doing stuff together for what, 2010?
Yeah, long time.
At least 2010. Been around 14, 15 years. When, I think your son Nick was in, at the high school in Julia, and then my kids were there. So thanks for everything.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nelson, for, for being here and guiding us through, through COVID. I mean, that was before I got here. But that was true that you were president through all that. So thank you for your contribution. You will be missed. I miss you a little bit already. So.
Can I just add a few?
Wait, we didn't get, we speak to each other.
You speak, you can speak last.
I definitely thank you for your leadership that you provided us. I enjoy the time on the board with you. You opened, you brought me on open arms. We sat, we talked. I really appreciate how you kept us on track, and I thank you for passing the mantle to me. No, it's really been a pleasure, and I thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nelson. I mean, I'm not good with goodbyes, so just so that I appreciate you and everything over that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for welcoming me. I've had a short stint on the board so far, but I've definitely always looked to you, to look at your eyes and see how you're reacting to stuff, just for the sake of knowing whether or not we're on the right track. So I do appreciate you, and best wishes to everything you have for your future.
Oh, thank you.
Last but not least, me. But thank you, Nelson.
Keep it to two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. Let me know when it's the 30-second warning. Thank you, because Nelson does not like long-winded people. Nelson, thank you so much. Man, we are an example how people cannot get along. That's what happened when you and I first, to come together and me looking at you, you as my big brother, that I come to you for advice, and you always have sound advice. You're a consummate professional. And I'm truly going to miss you. I really am. You just level the playing field. You neutralize things with your calm, professional demeanor. And I don't know, as long as you leave your phone number that I can call you periodically while I'm on this board, everything would be co-pathetic. Now, I did not know you had coffee with Dr. Coglinese every Friday. She has had coffee with me probably once in four years.
She may have embellished there.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll talk about this, okay. But I have one regret that you're leaving, not numerous regrets, but one that really stands out. Now I'm going to be the oldest on the board.
Yes.
Thanks, Nelson.
You call me your big brother, but I've only got you by a couple of months, so.
All it takes is a day. All it takes is a day. Thank you, my friend.
You're welcome.
For all you did, for all you continue. And you told me one thing else that, that even though you're not going to be on the board, you're going to be watching the board.
Yes, we'll see about that.
Have a greater board.
There's always a seat for you. All right, Dom, would you play this? We've got a little, little clip of a few pictures we put together.
So, uh, Mr. Albrecht, I'd like to present this honor of recognition for you and the fact to put in your office three members of your committee.
I love it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have the whole board come up and do one last shot, and then the family too.
You know, those pictures, I don't know, who was the old guy with the beard?
Yeah, we'll do one, and then we'll have a family committee. Okay, family, come on.
I'll cry later. All right, moving on with our agenda, you know, number item superintendent, could give it to you.
Oh, number, uh, for number A, this was actually something Mr. Albrecht brought up, uh, a time ago. As we're getting ready to start thinking about, um, our great athletic facility that we're putting out there, a comment was made about renaming the, the girls softball field. And so, um, I'm going to let Mr. Albrecht talk a little bit about that, but I'm also going to share with the board, we do have a policy on that. We have included in your, your FYI to read. And again, uh, the person that we do select, there is a process for it. Each, uh, individual from each of your districts, you would nominate one person to come and sit on a committee. We would look at the recommenda- criteria, and then that committee, we would bring it back to the board to then take a vote on. So, uh, Mr. Albrecht, do you want to share anything on that before we finish discussing it?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we name the girls softball field after Sue Giantonio. She was longtime coach, um, she coached, um, for five, five hundred and thirty wins. She was a coach for, I think, thirty-two years. Um, and I've got a lot of accomplishments we can share with that, that committee. But the, the neat thing was, she was a Crete Moni High School grad. And so to graduate from here, go on and coach, and be very successful for so many years, and she's continued on even after coaching being a big part of the boosters. I think it'd be a great honor and dedication to her and her service if we named the softball field after Sue, so. So, we need, you were, I think there's an application that you're going to get me, and I can finish that up, and then.
Yes, yes, we are creating that a- application for you to fill out. You've already given us a lot of the information.
Each board member can nominate somebody to have a, then have a Zoom call to go over it and make a recommendation back up.
Correct. So at our committee, the whole, or our next, uh, regular board meeting, and I'll kind of let you know which one. Think about somebody in your community that you serve that you would like to recommend to sit on this committee. And then that has to be discussed in open session. And then from that point, uh, they would meet with me and the team and, um, kind of review that criteria. So that would be next steps, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, seven, for the superintendent, Bravo discussion on board meeting dates twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I would like to postpone that to, to our next committee as a whole meeting, which is next week. Because I'd like our new board member to have an opportunity to look at this and review this. All right. All right, moving on, consent agenda approval.
Want me to read that? All right, under the consent agenda for item A, personnel and culture. Item one, approved superintendent, twenty-four, twenty-five evaluation. Item two, approved personnel report, which consists of approving certified staff reassignment. And that concludes that on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there any board member who would like to pull anything out of the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Move by Bill?
Second.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, roll call please, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mr. Gallegos is an aye. Mr. Suwalish?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
President Brown?
Aye, motion carry. We are at a point now we can share some tears, adjourn, sigh, die. And.
We need a motion.
We need.
And, yeah.
For this?
For.
To move sign die.
Yeah, to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, to adjourn that, okay, that's, that's, okay. I like a motion to adjourn side eye.
Move.
Move by Bill?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Questions or concerns? Roll call please, but, uh, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Can you say it again?
Aye, did I say it loud enough?
Mr. Gallegos is an aye. Mr. Suwalish?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
President Brown?
Aye. All righty, so, number ten, we have to point, uh, the organization of the new Board of Education.
Thank you all.
I think, I think he deserves a standing. I think he deserves a standing. I know he don't like it, but that's okay. All right. So, Dr. Coglanese is on you. So you, Dr. Coglanese, uh, ten alpha, Will County election results. Dr. Coglanese?
Yes, we had three candidates on the ballot this year. We had Elizabeth Venegas. She was un- unopposed, and she had a total of a hundred and eighty-two, um, votes. And, uh, yes. And Janine Wolfok, she was in the Crete, um, sector, and she had a total of two hundred and seventy-six votes, and she was uncontested. And we had Dr. Hall, and he was running against Vanessa Star at Lawson, and he had a total of a hundred and eighty-nine votes, and she had a total of a hundred and thirty-nine votes. So, Dr. Hall then won his precinct. So congratulations.
All right. Now it's time to elect a president pro temp. Does anybody want to? For president pro temp?
Oh, I was going to nominate Todd, okay.
Well, you can nominate Todd, too.
Oh, that's right, because you got to be sworn in.
All right. So we are at the point of oath of office administered by me at this point, I guess. And where's Elizabeth?
She's right over to your left.
Ah.
Yeah, she gets to go.
You gets to be the center of attract, of attention here.
You're going to read up.
Up there. Mm-hmm. Come over here. Okay, I'll get her, because I elected. Okay, come on up. We're going to do this in unison, though. I'm going to read this one time, and you say your name. Okay, just stand up. And you face, okay, that's better. Okay. Do you have the same thing I have, or what? What do you have here? Okay, mine isn't bigger print, huh? All right. You can bring it. Do I need this done? Be okay, I need this with me.
That should pick up enough.
Todd Hall.
Elizabeth Venegas.
Do solemn swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of Crete two O one school district.
Of Crete Moni's two O one school district.
In accordance with, with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear that.
That I shall.
That I shall.
Respect taxpayers' interest by serving as a faithful protector.
That I should respect taxpayers' interest by serving as a faithful protector. School district assets. Oh.
Of the school district asset.
Of the school district asset.
I shall encour- encourage.
I shall encourage.
And respect the free expression.
Respect the free expression.
Of my opinion by my fellow board members.
Of my opinion by my fellow board members.
And others.
And others.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
So can made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by the majority decision of the board.
I shall abide by the majority decision of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions, in such decisions through ethical.
In such decisions through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education.
As part of the Board of Education.
I shall accept the responsibility for my role.
I shall accept the responsibility for my role.
In the equitable and quality education of every student in the school.
And the equitable. And quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals.
Formulate goals.
Define outcomes.
Define outcomes.
And set the course for Crete Moni two O one school district.
Cre- the course for Crete Moni two O one school district.
I shall assist.
I shall assist.
In establishing.
In establishing.
And, and in environmental design.
A structure and, and environmental design.
To ensure all students.
To ensure all students.
Have the opportunity to attain.
To have the opportunity to attain.
Their maximum potential through a sound organi- organi- organization, framework.
Their max- maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement.
To ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement.
In all conditions affecting the education of our children.
In all conditions affecting the education of our children.
In compliance with the state law.
In compliance with the state law.
I shall serve as education key advocate.
I shall serve as education's key advocate.
On behalf of students.
On behalf of students.
In our school district or schools.
And our commu- community schools.
Or schools. To advance the vision.
To advance the vision.
For Crete Moni two O one U.
For Crete Moni two O one U.
And I shall strive.
And I shall strive.
To work together.
To work together.
With the district superintendent.
With the district superintendent.
To lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision.
To lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision.
The board has created.
The board has created.
Fostering.
Fostering.
Excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills.
Excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills.
Knowledge.
Knowledge.
Citizenship.
Citizenship.
And personal development.
And personal development.
Based on.
Based on.
One zero five.
One zero five.
Illinois compiled statute.
Illinois compiled statute.
Five dash ten.
Five dash ten.
Dash one six.
Dash one six.
Dot five.
Dot five.
Welcome.
For sec- secretary pro temp.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Suwalish?
Aye.
Ms. Venegas?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
All right. So, I need a motion to adopt the rules for the election of officers.
Second.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the rules are set forth in front of you. And first and up is the election of the president.
I would, I would like to nominate Mo Brown.
Second.
Okay. This is one. Any other nominations? I see by default, there's no nomination.
We still have to. We have to roll.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Gallegos?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Suwalish?
Aye.
Ms. Venegas?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
Aye. All right, election of vice president, do we have nomination for election of vice president?
I would like to nominate Alejandro Gallegos.
Okay, we got Alex being nominated for vice president.
I would like to nominate myself for vice president.
We got two for election or selected for vice president nominated for it. The positions, any other?
Yeah, roll call and when we vote, it's the last name of the nominee.
So we got Alex and, and Alfred.
So this is for Mr. Gallegos, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gallegos?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Nay.
Mr. Sawalish?
Nay.
Ms. Venegas?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Nay.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Hall? Ready? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gallegos?
Nay.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Sawalish?
Aye.
Ms. Venegas?
Nay.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Nay.
That's for three, Alex?
Yes.
Alex is nominated for vice president. Let me have any nomination for secretary? I nominate Jamie. The other nomination for secretary.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gallegos?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Sawalish?
Aye.
Ms. Venegas?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfok?
Aye.
Ms. Zeitstumbrus?
Aye.
All right. We have the executive board nominated and can I have a motion to adjourn? Move by Bill?
Second.
Second by Alex. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.